And we are going to review our survey results and our reopening plan. And I would like to start with Dr. Castile with some opening comments. Dr. Castile.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board. I would like to open the study session by thanking the community for the support, the patience, tremendous amount that we've received over the past few months. While we have a number of you who are upset and have at some of our decisions, for the most part, the expressions of displeasure have been respectful and kind, and it's meant a great deal. I want to assure the community that we have received and read your emails and letters. We've listened to your phone calls and voice messages. Without a doubt, they're all passionate and heartfelt. There is no doubt to the sincerity. I apologize that we have not responded to all of you. Responding in a timely manner has been one of my rules for many years, and it has become near impossible based on the volume. So I hope tonight's presentation will answer many of your questions and serve to assist you in the difficult decisions ahead. I want to, I want the community, and I know the Board knows, and our staff, that we share the frustration, the concern, and the fear of the unknown. Several things have become crystal clear to especially the staff that I feel like we've lived with each other the last few months. There is a no when in this situation. There is not a right answer or a single solution. We don't have consensus from our community on the direction we should go. But the virus is not likely to disappear in the next few weeks. So it has become crystal clear this challenge is not going to go away in the very near future. At the same time, I have full confidence on our teachers and our staff that we can continue to deliver the children of Chandler Unified School District a quality experience in a caring environment. If anyone can do it, I will say to you, and I affectionately refer to them as Arizona's Best. Arizona's Best can do it. Like us, the majority of you are overwhelmed with all the expert opinions and feel like we are on a roller coaster of immorsons. Many of you are like some of us that were in a bad dream and just hoping we wake up really soon. We have seen evidence of that in our surveys. It is a roller coaster. Within a few days of a survey closing, the COVID-19 started up again. Parents and staff wanted another opportunity to declare their choice. I want you to know, we acknowledge that the surveys are a snapshot in time. They're just one piece of information that we are using to help us gain a reading on our community and our staff. We could probably survey every few, three or four days, and the results would be different. But we're using it as a snapshot in time, and we are certainly watching the trends as all of you are. For every email and call we received to delay the start of school, we received an equal number to start on schedule. I even had emails that suggested we not open at all this year. For every parent and staff who wants everyone to wear a mask covering or face covering, there's an equal number who don't want them, either for the staff, for the kids, or for both. There are multiple of models for reopening schools. And my staff will attest to the fact that we have discussed and debated and analyzed and configured the impact all of these models had on finances, because that is a reality, our ability to staff them, the quality of instruction that could be delivered, the health and safety of our children, and the social emotional impact on our children. We have focused on recommending two options for parents to send their children to school and receive, to send their children to school or to send, receive their education online. Those are the two options we're discussing with the Board this evening. We are, we are committed to doing everything humanly possible to keep our schools sanitized with all the precautions possible. At the same time, we are equally committed to offering an online option that is enhanced and provides increased contact with teachers. There will be some customization for areas where the online curriculum isn't available. So there will be customized options. And as a district of choice, we have many varieties out there. I would ask the community not to judge us on the fourth quarter. We were in crisis mode and had very little time to turn things around. This is very different, and we will be prepared. In closing, thank you for listening and reflecting on tonight's deliberations and discussions from the school board. We ask for your continued patience and hopefully that you will allow us to continue to serve your family in the days and months ahead. Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I know all of you are familiar with Ms. Amber Stewart. She is our Director of Assessment and Research, and she is going to share the results of our latest staff survey. And again, this is a snapshot, a moment in time. And I will turn it over to you, Amber.
Thank you. I have to ask, does everyone see my screen?
I believe so.
Perfect. Okay. Good afternoon. Today, I will be reviewing the staff survey results. The results will be discussed in three parts: procedures, delay of school, and online instruction. This first slide is, provides a little bit more information about the respondents. We had 3,789 people complete the survey, which accounted for 76% of CUSD staff. In looking at the demographics on the side, you'll notice that over half were CUSD teachers. The survey was distributed from June 16th through the 20th. Most responses were collected prior to Governor Ducey's press conference and the decisions on mask requirements for Maricopa County. And again, we know that if we were to survey again, our data set would have variance or be different because things are consistently changing in Arizona. The first question that was presented was, "Are you prepared to report on your scheduled first day of work in July?" And this graph is displayed as teacher, administrator, certified professional staff, and support. The red bar indicates that yes, they're prepared to report. The purple bar means they were, they did not feel like they were prepared to report on their first day when completing the survey last week. The next item stated, "I believe staff should wear masks at all times when we return for the upcoming school year." This information was broken down by certified and support staff. Certified being the red bars, support staff being the green. 47% of our certified staff agreed that we should be wearing masks, or said yes, we should be wearing masks at all times. 53% said no. 46% of our support staff said that we should be in masks all the time. And 54% of our support staff said no. Keep in mind, this question was asked prior to Maricopa County releasing regulations on mask requirements. The next question or statement asked, "I believe staff should wear masks in common areas throughout the work location." Both certified and support staff responded yes at 77%. The next item on the survey, "I will adhere to wearing a mask if the district requires it." Both certified and support staff stated that they would adhere to wearing a mask if required at 95 and 96%. This visual transitions to students wearing masks. When asking staff, "I believe students should wear masks at all times when we return for the upcoming year," 46% of our staff said yes, which is the red portion of the doughnut chart. 54% said no, which is the purple portion. The next item stated, "I believe students should wear masks when engaging in certain activities on campus." The data shifts to 78% of the staff saying yes and 22% of the staff saying no. The next item is, "I am willing to minimize close contact of students while in my classroom, which may include desks facing forward and spaced throughout the room." 96% of our staff are willing to help minimize student contact in the classroom. The next one is, "I am willing to require students to hand sanitize when entering or exiting the classroom." An overwhelming 99% of our staff stated yes for this item on the survey. The next one was, "I am willing to help in the effort to clean my workspace for staff and students." 96% of the respondents said yes or percent said no. The last question when looking at procedures was, "I am willing to take my temperature before arriving to work each day." 96% of the respondents said that they are willing to take their temperature prior to work. So that concludes the procedure portion of the survey responses. The next set are regarding the delay of school options. Again, this was all in the same survey. We're just disseminating it in the three parts. The first portion that was asked was, "I believe we should delay the first, I believe we should delay the first, oh, I'm missing a word there, day of school." And, and this is broken down by teacher, administrator, certified professional staff, and support staff. The red bar is yes, the purple bar will be no. Overall, when putting these together, 66% of staff did not want to delay school when completing the survey last week. If staff chose yes, that they felt like school should be delayed, they were asked two additional questions. The first one, they were asked to select the following delayed start option. So the 34% of staff that said they felt that they should delay the first day of school selected, or I'm sorry, 57% of those respondents said they'd like to delay the start date by more than two weeks. 33% said they'd like to, by more than, I'm sorry. Let me restart so we can understand this chart a little bit better. So if they said yes, they would like to delay, which was 34% of our respondents, they were asked this question to pick the following delayed start options. The first one, which is 57%, they'd like to delay start dates by more than two weeks. 33% of the respondents said they'd like to delay start by two weeks. And 10% said they'd like to delay the start by one week. Then asked to pick a solution for delaying the start of school. And 64% of the staff thought that shortening the intercession would be a good solution for delaying school. Now we're going to move on to online instruction, which is our Chandler Online Academy. The results that I'm going to show tonight are specific to K-12 teachers. Prior to this one on the screen, a question was asked if they were interested in learning more about becoming an online teacher. If they selected yes, they were presented this question. 48% of our staff said that yes, they would be interested in learning more information about becoming an online teacher. Now, looking at this, out of those 48%, 68% of them said that they are interested in becoming an online teacher for the upcoming year. That 68% accounts for 681 teachers that responded to the survey. If they selected yes, they're interested in becoming an online teacher, they were asked another question. They were asked if they were able to, if they were available for additional training to become an online teacher for the upcoming year. And out of those 68%, 97% of the staff would be available for online training. In addition to the questions presented today, Cabinet is reviewing 110 pages of staff feedback. They are also continuing to read parent feedback that was presented at the last Board meeting. And that concluded the staff survey results presentation. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Amber. Are there any questions from the Board? If not, thank you, Amber. I appreciate it, and I'm glad you clarified the slide concerning the number of teachers that responded, that it was 681 teachers that were, that were actually interested in becoming an online teacher. So I guess we will move on then to our next section, which is our school calendar, and Dr. Castile will be presenting information on that.
Madam President, members of the Board. The administration is recommending delaying the start of school two weeks by making up, and making up the 100 and day, 180 required number of days for our students by eliminating one week of the October and one week of the March intercessions. That would move the start date for students to August 5th. Our new teachers will be returned, would return on July 22nd. And we have, I believe, over 200 newly employed teachers that come in for training early. Our returning teachers, our veterans, would return on July 29th. The fall intercession will be October 5th through 9th, and the spring intercession would be March 15th through the 19th. We left the winter intercessions as the same, and early release dates and parent-teacher conferences have been adjusted. That calendar has been posted. It would be posted should the Board approve it and disseminated. I've been asked, well, the teachers voted, the majority of the teacher voted not that they were ready to come back and not to delay the school year. There are, I think, three primary reasons as we have wrestled with this decision. Certainly, the virus, the numbers continue to change, and we thought we were really on the downhill, thinking this was going beautifully in Arizona, and then all of a sudden, we saw the increase. Whether it's medically sound or kidding ourselves, we're hoping that couple of weeks gives us another or additional opportunity to see if this mask, face covering, mandatory face covering can impact this virus and get it slowed down a bit. That's number one. Number two, we wanted the time for parents to have time to make their choices. And that's coupled with number three is, when we looked at the choices we wanted to offer, we narrowed the options, saying, let's not try to be everything to everyone. Let's do, select the two options and do them well. We want to refine those options, especially the online, with special enhancements, increasing the opportunity for children to engage with a student, with the teachers to engage with their students online, not, not a typical online that many people are familiar with. And then we need additional time to train our teachers. And we have a number of teachers, as you can see, that want to be trained, that want information on being an online teacher. That would give us a couple more weeks in there to bring them back, provide them training, as well as any of our teachers in, in more of the technology that may be required throughout the year. Give us an opportunity to refine the online option in particular and give our parents an opportunity to make their choice, give them time to think about it, and ask additional questions. So the August 5th gave us enough breathing room so we could do things well. So I would take any questions, and I know my trusted colleagues are online, and they certainly can help answer any questions the Board might have. Again, we've been celebrated by many, and thank you for delaying the school year. You should have delayed it longer, or why are you delaying the school year? Things aren't going to change as a result of it. So this is a difficult decision. We were doing it for a practical reason. Give us more time to be ultimately prepared, even more than we had planned to.
Thank you, Dr. Castile. Do our Board members have any questions for Dr. Castile?
I have a few.
This is Mrs. Love, Ms. Love, sorry.
I'm sorry, and I can't get my camera to work. I think there's something wrong with my connection, or otherwise, I'd turn it on, so I apologize. So my question is, we've been getting a lot of questions, Dr. Castile, about why two weeks, you know, and what difference that'll make. We've been seeing a lot of that visibly in the emails. You know, can you clarify that? And can you also speak to kind of some of the recommendations from our teachers to start out online and start on time and open up as the numbers change with COVID?
Okay, so the first question is, why two weeks? We, in Chandler Schools, we love our calendar, and I know that we have a 96, 97 approval rating from our community and our teaching staff. They love the year round or the modified year round calendar with those two week breaks in October and March. We had the opportunity on this occasion not to dramatically change the year by lengthening it, but to take a week off of intercession, thereby giving a, still a break to our families and our staff. It's not the preferred, but we, again, wanted the additional two weeks for training to make sure our teachers were comfortable online or working with our students virtually in a part-time way, a part-time basis, connecting with our families. So that was the reason, Ms. Love. And the second part of your question was, help me again.
So like...
I'm sorry, I didn't write it down, and I should have been writing it down.
It's a question, Dr. Castile, if you're okay. It was, why not start online? Start on time and start online?
Yeah.
Well, again, we would need training to start online and to do it on time. We still need the training to make sure it's done and done well, if that's the question. So this section is training time. Go ahead.
Yeah. You answered it with how you answered the whole thing. So you answered the question without even knowing it. You know, other thing than I, other question that I have is, can you kind of discuss some of the impacts to our staff if we didn't start, or we pushed it back further and further in terms of like pay and the financials to the start?
If we push back more than two weeks?
Yes.
Well, right now, and this is for our teaching staff, and we will be communicating with them. Assuming the Board approves this, there will be a letter going out tonight or first thing in the morning. Our staff is expecting to start getting paid right after they start school. By pushing it back, it's going to delay their first check. Now, even though it's the same time, 99% of the districts in the state or the teachers in the state start getting paid, our teachers were under a contractual agreement, and they are expecting to get paid at a certain date. We have a really a pretty nice way of mitigating that for the staff. We have their pay for performance that we still owe them, and we will distribute it during that period of time to help offset not having that paycheck at that particular time. I want to assure the community, and I think our staff knows this, they still will get their full contract. It will just start a little later. Their paychecks during the year could be a little larger depending on how the paycheck falls. And in addition, this two weeks of training, we are going to offer our, our staff an opportunity to get paid for that training at a pretty, very, a very nice rate. And we're hoping that also mitigates any difficulty with not receiving their pay when they had expected it.
Thank you so much. And just my last question is, if the numbers continue to increase the way that they are in Arizona, or, you know, if a second wave hits as projected, do you foresee any changes to the calendar at that point?
You know, Ms. Love, I'm, I'm way beyond saying anything isn't possible. I mean, anything's possible. I certainly hope not, but we are remaining flexible, and we will be better prepared if, if something should happen. We are in close contact with the Health Department. In fact, had a, a call today with them. I have Ms. Hartley, our nurse, nursing director, on the phone. So we will watch that very closely, and we will follow the director, directives of our state officials, but we will be ready to make adjustments as needed. This is phase, this is quadrant one, where we're just trying to get schools started. As you know, the task force had four quadrants, which we have planned should we need to move to quadrant two, three, or four.
Thank you, Dr. Castile.
Thank you, Dr. Castile. I do have one question. We've had a few emails concerning family vacations that they had made for over the two-week intercessions, and not only from families but of students, but also staff members. Could you please comment on how we'll deal with that?
You know, we have those requests throughout the year, whether the family has a camping trip or a hunting trip, or there's a special family reunion with our staff the same way. The staff can use, use leave they have if they want to take some time off our families. If they're online, they certainly can do the assignments remotely. Many times, our teachers, our schools have made arrangements when they have advance notice, you know, we're going to be gone a few days. We have this coming up. I will, I will commit to that we will be flexible, given the change in the calendar, and try to be as flexible as we can with our families and our staff. So I've gone on record. My staff doesn't, I hadn't shared that with them, so.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from our Board members?
Madam President, this is Dave Evans. And Dr. Castile, just for people who may be listening on their phones and don't have a visual, can you just, can you just mention the end of the year? How the, how the year finishes and what timeframe?
The end of last year or this coming year? I'm sorry, David.
Oh, no, this, 2021.
There's, there would be no change in the calendar. Are you talking about the calendar? They'd have one week in March instead of the two weeks in March. But the end of the school year would still, I believe it's before, before Memorial Day, which was a high, high request during our last calendar development.
Right, okay. Okay, I just wanted that clarification for people who don't have it in front of them. Thank you.
Sure. And it's, it will be posted online and very visible, but right now, it's just taking five days from October, five days from March, and we have to, our students have to attend school 180 days for us to get full funding.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Castile. I believe that we will now be moving to a presentation from Dr. Gilbert.
Madam President, members of the Board. Later in today's Board meeting, in the CUSD reopening guidelines, we will be requesting in compliance with Maricopa County, city, and town guidelines. All patrons six years of age and over are required to wear face coverings in public places where persons are unable to maintain continuous physical distancing of six feet or more. We're also going to request that the governing board give the superintendent the authority to adjust the precautions, precautionary measures as the county and/or local government regulations change. We're going to be recommending this for approval. Should the Board approve this, we will be monitoring... Should the board approve this, we will be monitoring this over the next several weeks as we get closer toward the school year starting. I'd also like to share some of the other precautions that we have been working on or that we have put in place in regards to our guidelines. Give me one moment. Can you see my screen?
Yes, Dr. Gilbert.
So other areas that we have been following precautions as relates to the area of health, which would be educating our students on age-appropriate education, on good hygiene practices via video and signage throughout our school sites, as well as processes for managing, managing ill staff and students and returning to school after illness. As we look at our, our students, oh, excuse me, for some reason it's trying not to be, trying to be difficult. For our students, health, our health office personnel are developing a flow chart and communication for all staff and parents as to protocols and procedures used to avoid the spread of infection, working closely with the state and county agencies for additional resources, and they will also isolate ill students from well, ill students and staff and reduce frequency of non-health-related visits to the health office. We will also look at, in regards to staff, temperature checks as was shared earlier at home before coming to school, as well as verification of employee status daily. Students and staff will be expected to follow the exclusion and return to school guidelines set forth by the state and the county health department. As we get into cleaning, you'll see that we've increased, will increase daily cleaning and disinfecting high-traffic areas, doors, counters, sinks, and other horizontal services. Restroom and health office touch, touchpoints areas will be disinfected on a regular basis. Guidelines and, guidelines and supplies for clean desks and tables will be provided to each classroom teacher. Use of hydroxyl ozone machines to disinfect large areas will also be utilized and we're working closely with the transportation department to look at increasing that to be able to use in our buses. Signage for safe hygiene and handwashing will also be posted in classrooms, in bathrooms, in restrooms areas. As we look at safety, hand sanitizer available in all classrooms, multipurpose rooms, cafeteria spaces, flexible glass shields have been installed or are, have been installed or currently being installed in all school main offices. Masks, gloves, and face shields are available at each site for our employees to utilize. As we look at the area of transportation, you will see buses will be wiped down each night, handrails, door handles, extremely exposed areas, face coverings will be, be required when social distancing cannot be accomplished with the expectation of students with sensory or breathing challenges will be exceptions. Any students who have visible symptoms may not enter the buses. They're looking at, the bus drivers will be screening in the sense of looking at, is there any symptoms? Parents must really emphasize with their children the social distancing protocols, why at bus stops, and if possible, have students wait in vehicles until the bus has arrived. We know that as we look at lunches within our schools, because it's a large area where students would be congregating, as we look at lunch for elementary or at the high school level, both will stagger classrooms going into lunch or at the secondary level stagger students to arrive in the cafeteria to maintain distancing. Both will have students, students must wash hands or sanitize prior to arrival in the cafeteria. We'll have markings on the floor or stickers to ensure social distancing. As we look at all items within the cafeteria, will be individually wrapped or contained in an enclosed container. As we look for lunch consumption, especially at the elementary, students may be socially distanced using the cafeteria, stage, or outdoor areas as weather permits. A couple different pieces as relate to the secondary, as I mentioned, will stagger the arrival of students into the cafeteria for social distancing. Cafeteria remain, will remain open all day to allow students to pick up food outside of the normal lunch periods to reduce the number of students at any one given time. I know there was a question in regards to, with the lunchroom open, how will that be addressed? Each school will be working with their cafeteria manager and structuring, structuring how they will get students in and out of those areas, devising a way to have the minimal number of students as possible within those areas. You'll also see on the last bullet under lunch operation, they will be encouraging students to scan using their IDs versus the pin pad to reduce the amount of contact with some of the areas in the lunchroom. Also at the secondary, they'll offer alternative points of service outdoors to reduce congestion in the cafeteria and as well as at the elementary, students will remain in cafeteria with distancing or they will utilize, secondary utilize hallways, other open spaces, or may return to classrooms at the principal's discretion as they're developing the plan on how they will manage these areas within their site. So you will see that in this plan, in the number of areas, the precautions that we are looking to take as we are managing, trying to address students congregated in areas, how are we going to clean the different areas, whether it's the cafeteria, the bathrooms, what can be done in the classrooms, those type of things, we are looking at and addressing as we move forward. With that, I would ask if you have any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. I do believe that Mr. Evans would like to perhaps have Mrs. Hartley address how a typical day would be looking.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Dr. Gilbert did a great job of talking about all of the ways we keep the facilities clean and keep them safe for kids, but I was really wondering, especially at the elementary level, what happens when a student complains that they don't feel well and based on the symptoms as we know them, I guess, I'd say that could, could lead to, you know, COVID-19 or a contagious situation? How does that actually happen in terms of are they escorted from their classroom by their teacher? What will that actually look like? And do you have protocols in place, I guess? And is there training that's going to happen for school sites and nurses' offices?
So, Mr. Evans, this is Frank Narducci, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools, and Mrs. Hartley can join in. So one of the protocols will be temperatures being taken at home. There will be a protocol in place for parents to look at symptoms and be defining what those symptoms are. In addition, our staff will also be trained on looking at symptoms and also knowing which are not symptoms, things where some of our kiddo, our, our students have critical health plans, knowing what those are for each student so that we're not confusing asthma or allergies with the symptoms that are related to COVID. Also, our staff working with students and visually working with them, if there is a concern that a student says they do feel ill, they will be automatically sent to the office and the health clerks at those offices will work directly with that student in an isolated area with communication to parents. Lindsay, would you like to take over the protocols there from the health office?
Yes, thank you. Everything you said, we are outlining how the, how that looks from the classroom to the health office, you know, educating teachers on things that can be handled in the, in the classroom versus sending that child to the health office where they could potentially be exposed. So really giving them kind of a flow chart of, of what, you know, what they're seeing and then what needs to come to the health office. We also, even before the mask mandate, indicated that certain symptoms, if a child wasn't wearing a mask, they'd have the mask placed in the classroom to come to the health office to kind of eliminate that, you know, walking to the health office and stuff like that. But again, then once they get to the health office, yeah, we will have a protocol as far as what symptoms they're seeing, fevers, coughs, shortness of breath, those kind of things, and be able to identify then if they have certain symptoms, then they'll need to go home versus other things that, you know, potentially could go back to class. And like Mr. Narducci said, we'll have the health offices separated from isolation standpoint of COVID-like symptoms and then, you know, obviously other kids that still come to the health office that need daily medications and stuff like that, you know, will be separated.
Okay, thank you. And then the other, the other issue is, and we can talk about this later, is just confidentiality because, you know, where's that kid going by himself and word starts spreading that, the rumor mill starts that, well, he's going to such and such because he has, you know...
Right. We will have to be very diligent about educating everyone on those privacy laws to make sure that, you know, if parents report to us that, you know, someone is sick, that, that's still protected under the privacy law and that can't be discussed. But I do realize that, you know, multiple people are in the health offices, but a lot of our health offices are even equipped with curtains and we're getting barriers for the ones that don't have curtains, so that way they're truly isolated away from each other in the health office.
Right. And I just, I, you know, I'm not trying to make a panic here. I know that our health professionals do a fantastic job of keeping confidentiality, but it's just, this is just a different environment we're in now, so.
Yes.
Mr. Evans, if I may, also the other part will be on student education, that students may feel ill for all types of reasons, that it may not be directly related to the virus or COVID.
Absolutely.
It may be that they didn't eat enough, they have a headache in the morning. So, I mean, it's going to be our communications with students to understand and when students understand better, I think they act in more respectful manners.
Right. Okay, I'm sorry, one more, and it's just because you just touched on something, Mr. Narducci, that made me think of what I've seen in public is, water fountains are closed to the public from what I've seen. Again, education to, sent home to parents about kids bringing hydration, bringing water to school.
Correct. Water fountains will not be open for the public and they'll be clearly marked. However, we will be asking parents, and again, not all the details are in tonight's meeting here, but there'll be more communications, deeper communications. They will be instructed to send water bottles with their student, with their names on it so that that student is just utilizing that water bottle.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I believe Mrs. Brunner has some questions.
Thank you. Yes, my first question is to Dr. Castile. What exactly would you be looking at, what criteria would you be using to determine whether to end the wearing of masks? Would it be following the county, which basically assumes people will be six feet away from each other, which we know will not be happening in our classrooms? And if parents commit to a model for first quarter that they want to be in person and then halfway through that quarter, we change the rules on them and we take away masks, what is their recourse?
My criteria will be watching, first, it's important to understand, we have three municipalities in Chandler Schools. We deal with Queen Creek, excuse me, Queen Creek, Gilbert, and Chandler. When the county came out and they were all relatively consistent that said anybody aged six or more would wear a mask, we wanted to comply since that's what they were expected to do out in the community. They're walking to the, the store or if they're in the, in the stores, they're supposed to be wearing them, so we wanted to be consistent in our environment. What I would use as criteria is frankly, the only reason I ask for that is we have one meeting in July, July 15th with the school board. If something happens, I probably would make a call to each of you and consult with you before taking any action, but it would not be, it would not require us to convene a formal board meeting. But I would take a look at the data and see how things were going with the trend. I'd certainly consult with the board, the team, the health officials, and make a call at that point. If something happens and parents want to make a change at any time, we're going to talk about that in the options, but again, my staff is going to raise their eyebrows. We're committed to being as flexible and in the past, I would say 95% of the time, we can meet a parent's expectations on an exception basis with a good rationale and we would deal with that as needed and, and just try to work with all our families so they feel safe and secure with their children, whether it's online, in our schools, you know, in the band, on the football field, it doesn't matter. So I hope that helps.
To be honest, I'm still not sure what the criteria will be because, you know, and maybe we don't know, you know, that...
We don't know. I'd look at the criteria of what this county, the cities are doing, what the medical professionals are saying. I'm certainly not going to make it in isolation without a lot of information and a lot of data and then consulting with the board.
I've had multiple parents concerned that they would walk into a situation thinking there's masks, commit to a delivery model, and then feel like the situation will change on them. And then to have that instability for their children doesn't seem fair. So I guess I'm just concerned that once we make a commitment to something, that we stick with it until we're absolutely sure that that thing is not necessary anymore, whether it be masks or sanitizer or hand washing or distancing or any of those elements that are being recommended by medical professionals and have been, you know, frankly, supported by lots of evidence. My, my last question is regarding staff and PPE. I was wondering if you could describe the different options of masks and shields that the district is looking at and purchasing to address the needs of youngers who might need to see their teacher's face to understand what the mouth looks like when they make a sound, if they're in kindergarten and learning, you know, different sounds, or students with hearing impairments, or students who have multiple disabilities who may have great difficulty wearing a mask and therefore the staff that work with them being exposed to more bodily fluids than the typical teacher. What, what are we providing for those staff members? And also what can we do for students who do not possess some ma, form of mask?
Okay. We have already purchased the face shields and have been using them. We have brought children in or our staff has brought children in to do some testing one-on-one, so the shields have been in operation. And as a former first grade teacher, I certainly would see the use because it's very difficult to teach sounds and teach kids how to read without them seeing your mouth. And we do have, I've heard from a number of parents whose children are hearing impaired and they rely on seeing your lips move. Again, we are going to make those accommodations. We have the face shields. As far as the staff, because it's a mandate throughout the county, we're anticipating our staff will have masks of their own and if they don't, on a day-to-day basis, we would provide those. We'll also, for children that are in financial need and need support with masks, we would also provide those. We already purchased the gloves. We have the sanitizer on, the sanitizers will be installed, I believe, by the first week of July and the cleaning agent for every classroom. So it's all, it's all underway right now and we anticipate having the PPE we need at the start of school.
Okay, thank you. And then just one, one other group, the group that works with the students who they might need to assist with toileting or, you know, the high-needs students.
Yes.
Do we, do we have access to the type of PPE that they would need that I would assume would be more than what the other teachers would need?
I will, I'm, I'm sure we're committing to that. I have not requested information, but between Dr. Marshall and Mrs. Hartley, we will make sure we have what they need in order to keep themselves safe and the children.
Thank you.
You bet.
Lindsay, I know that you're next, but I just want to ask an additional question concerning face coverings. Would you describe what will be... Would you describe what will be an acceptable face covering? Is it just masks, or will students be allowed, younger students especially, be allowed to wear face shields?
Ms. Hartley, or Mr., Dr. Gilbert, do you, have you had discussions on that, particularly? What the requirements are for face, face covering?
The initial conversations have been at this time that it was a, a mask or a cloth face covering, but we would definitely work with a student or family if the shield is what was necessary, because of students not wanting something on their face. Ms. Hartley?
Yeah, I mean, we can definitely look into that, though the one thing we'll have to look into is sizes for those face shields. A lot of them do come in solely adult sizes, so making sure that we could, you know, secure ones that would fit the younger elementary students if that was needed.
I, I think it's something we may need to look into, because there, I mean, there are some children who are extremely sensitive to having things covering their face. I'm thinking, you know, of, and, and those who have asthma and feel like they're not going to breathe, it may stimulate an asthma attack on them, and, and I do have a few concerns, and I do hope that we can be sensitive and flexible in what we can utilize when necessary to assist everyone to be safe. Lindsay, I know you have a question, or two, or three.
I've always got questions with these kinds of things, but my first question, so I was looking at the face covering policy that we've come up with, and I was looking under B1, which are the exemptions that are applicable for not wearing face masks, and it says the CDC guidelines, like, like those people who fall under their criteria for medical or mental health conditions, or developmental disabilities, but when I looked at the CDC website, it really didn't have much more than that. The closest thing that I could find was children under the age of two, it wasn't recommended, children who have trouble breathing, which is kind of broad, right? And anyone who is unconscious, incapacitated, or otherwise unable to remove masks without assistance shouldn't wear masks. You know, I got a question from a parent in terms of, well, what if my children show up to school and they don't have masks? And, you know, I cite, you know, oh, like, Timmy was having trouble breathing today with his allergies, or I just don't want to because of, you know, his anxiety. Can we get some clarification as to what we are defining as a medical or mental health condition, you know, in terms of that exemption? Because I think a lot of parents are wanting that, and then who is enforcing that, I guess, too, when it comes to our students?
Would you all like me to take that question, regarding what that policy would apply to as far as students with significant cognitive disabilities or significant social and emotional needs?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Hi. Please, yeah, would you identify who you are?
Yes, this is Kim Marshall, I'm the Director of Student Services, and Special Education and Section 504 are under our umbrella of support. Some of the things that we have been discussing, and even as an East Valley group, are, is the access to the in-person. We know that about 80% of our students will be returning, according to some of the parent feedback that I've received. Some of our students won't be able to manipulate those masks on and off due to their physical limitations and/or cognitive disabilities that would prevent them from understanding the reasonings why to wear a mask, or could possibly, you know, escalate types of behaviors because of their inability to comprehend of why it's needed. In those particular situations, we would need to look at each individual student, get with the IEP team to determine if their least restrictive environment is current, and if it's still applicable. Most of our students that are in our specialized classrooms, if they are not able to use the mask as appropriate, then of course, most of those students will be socially, not socially distanced, but physically distanced, to make sure that they are kept in what we call our airplane arms length away, just to make sure that they maintain that physical distancing. And then, of course, our staff will then have the, the PPE while they work with those students.
In addition, Mrs. Love, this is Frank Narducci, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary. At elementary level, where we can social distance students, we will do that, and I'll be explaining that in my, my session for the models. But if a student does come to school, we will have options at the school for that student. We will contact the parent, talk to the parent as well, but that student would then need to be social distanced throughout the day, and we will describe that to parents and, you know, pre, pre choosing of the environment of their choice, whether it be online environment, that might work better for families who choose that, or the in-person, where we have other restrictions on us based on county, county recommendations.
Thank you. I, I do appreciate that. I do still feel that we need a little bit more clarity for the community in terms of what constitutes a medical or mental health condition. I understand it from the developmental disability standpoint, but I don't understand it quite clearly, and I don't think our families understand quite clearly what is an acceptable, an acceptable medical or mental health condition. So I'm hoping that we can get some clarity on that for our families, and then, you know, also, like, if a family does have a specific question for that, I would hope that there is some, you know, and trust that there is some consultation to, to discuss those particular exemptions, because it's just not, it's not clear for me, and then from the emails that I receive from families, it's not very clear for them as well. And, you know, I would hate to just have students show up because, well, they didn't want to wear a mask, you know, as opposed to, you know, looking at the clearly defined guidelines of what constitutes a medical or mental health condition that would be exempt from the mask. The other thing that I was looking at in terms of, like, the county's recommendation, so the county is recommending masks for children two and older, in conjunction with CDC guidelines, but our policy only covers six and under who are exempt from wearing masks, you know, which is quite a gap. Can you explain, like, the reasoning that we did not include those who are two and older as opposed to six and over?
Mrs. Love, I think the reason that came about is because we'd seen a number of things come through as to whether it was six and, and younger, not five and younger not, or two years of age, and so we looked at inconsistent of using six as the age, age portion. I would also like to go back just for a second and, and share with you in relation to the guidelines of what would be, constitute whether or not a student would wear a mask. We will be working together, myself and Mr. Narducci, as well as Ms. Hartley as a team, to make sure that we have something consistent that we can communicate out to our families. But I think it, it also goes back to that we will have consultation when we're working with families as to getting to the, the heart of what needs to be done and why a student may or may not have to wear a mask. But when it comes to the age, we looked at six, six years of age, because that was, what was the latest that came up.
And then my last question, I know I've asked it before, but is there any flexibility in terms of starting a mask drive for our students who maybe cannot afford masks? You know, maybe something run through the Chandler Care Center? And I'm also thinking, too, the ADE recommended that districts help our families who don't have access to laundry facilities to wash and launder masks daily per CDC recommendations. Is the district considering a mechanism for this to support? I'm thinking specifically of our families who have to pay per load, or our families that may not have accessibility to the necessary cleaning products to wash their masks by hand per the CDC recommendations? You know, is there a plan for that?
I think at, at this time, I don't believe we've had extensive discussions in this area, but we will, as well as working with our care center, to see how we could, and what could be done in order to address the issue you have brought up, to see how we can assist our families.
Mrs., Ms. Love, since you and I had that conversation, we are having the back-to-school that the city sponsors, where the kids get supplies, and I have a call-in to them now to see if they can include the mask distribution, and I have it on my list to discuss with Monica Romero, who runs our Title I program, to see what she can do in terms of the other items you talked about.
Thank you so much, and I'm going to defer the rest of my time to Laura, because I think she's probably got a question along the lines of this, too, and I don't want to hog up space.
Thank you, Lindsay. So my, my last question is, why would we make the cutoff by age and not by class level? Because I've got a long time, I have never taught kindergarten, thank God, but I'd love all the kindergartner teachers, and I just can't imagine them being able to tell the six-year-olds in their classroom they have to wear masks and the five-year-olds they don't. So I'm wondering if we could make it by level, like, K up, or something, just so that the teachers don't lose their, their minds at work?
You know, I think it's a good idea. Typically, a six-year-old is a first grader, and there is some overlap. We have six-year-olds in kindergarten, and that's probably a pretty good idea, so, to make it first grade on up. And Mr. Narducci is going to have some discussions about our ability to social distance in our elementary schools in the next conversation, which might help clear some of this up.
And with that, I think we should go ahead and move on, and let Mr. Narducci talk about our models of instruction, and we will start with the elementary. Mr. Narducci?
Madam President, members of the board, it's important to note that elementary pre-enrollments right now, our pre-enrollment numbers, along with our parental choice of a new online virtual learning environment called Elementary Connect at Chandler Online Academy, will provide us with the opportunity to meet social distance guidelines at elementary schools a little stronger. We are looking at the ability, and we have drawing plans for our classroom sizes to where we can accommodate 15 to 21 students in our in-person model. Again, key will be, when we discuss both models here, for us to really look at how our online model is meeting the needs of our kindergarten through sixth-grade students. So with that, when we meet our social distance standards of the six feet, in all, everything that we've received, it's an area where students then may choose not to have the face mask on, or the protective system. So for example, if a teacher's teaching and her location is no closer than six feet, she would be able to have that ability. And the same thing with our desks facing forward, et cetera, will give us that opportunity for student to student, students doing independent work at their desk, to be able to meet that. And again, this will take time with students to be able to walk them through it, and to have a learning modality with every student, so that they understand why. And you're correct, younger than six years, it's going to be very hard for a student to understand and realize why, and just as many of our families have a hard time when they just go to social places within our community. So we will continue to guide, just like family members with, with our students. So we have plans for not only portable classroom spaces, which are a little smaller, but also our standard 30 by 30 classroom space. So with that, to get the social distancing, we will be working with our staff members, our principals, and our teachers to figure out what's a necessity to have in the classroom, and making it a priority for our classroom desks or tables to be able to meet that social distancing. We've had lots of parents that have asked us, what is that number? And so right now, our numbers are indicating between 15 and 21 per classroom, with parents being able to choose our successful online model, which is going, which will be explained here, as well as those that are returning in person. With that said, I'd like to go on and talk a little bit about the in-person model of instruction for our students. And important to note here that what parents see and what the board sees here is not the depth that we've gone through with task force, as well as the thousands of input pieces we've received by surveys and, and parent emails, but more guidance will be coming on those areas, as we review them with administrators and teachers, and then make that available way in advance to our parents, where they can make the right choices. Where parents who choose the in-person model of instruction, which will be at a school site, will maintain their registration at their current enrollment site. So it's important to note that for preschool parents that are listening, as well as our board, this is the only model for our preschool students. So if you are looking at preschool in Chandler, it will be an in-person model, where we will have social distancing and make sure that our numbers meet those needs. But again, there will not be a preschool option in the online version. In addition, our parents who choose the preschool model of instruction, there'll be five full days of instruction per week, as they're customarily have in the regular school setting. Students, when they arrive to school, will report directly to classrooms when they, when they, when they arrive. If they are having breakfast first, they will social distance in the cafeteria, be monitored, and then sent to the classrooms right after they're done with breakfast. This will be the same options for our bus riders, as well as our parent and pickup, our parent, uh, parents who decide to drive their students to school, the walkers and bike riders too. So our schools will have communications with our families as to how those students have. Our cohorts of students will stay together where possible throughout the day. So with that, there are different transitions that our students will be making. So when they're staying together as a cohort, we'll see a change in customarily, for example, how we do interventions. Some parents are accustomed to us moving students during a thing called "winning time", where we try to match the intervention with the student. Here, our teachers that our students are with will provide those interventions within the content of the curriculum that they're receiving the intervention. Also, some of our families are used to departmentalization of content areas at our elementary schools. So that will start with limiting student movement and have more teacher movement during that time. And again, those models will change as, as phase two. With lunch, our students will eat together. Recession, our students will also go to recess together, but there'll be more distancing of students in specified areas of playground, and our students will go to their specials as well, in the, in the areas that were designed for those specialists, like our PE, our technology classes, music, band orchestra, et cetera. Dismissal also will be done by cohorts, so that our students not only arrive in an orderly fashion, but they'll also be dismissed in a staggered fashion, whether they're going to Kids Express for after-school care, whether they're a bike rider, whether they're going to parent pickup and drop-off, or whether they're walking home. So we will have plans in place for, as we normally do, for older children to be dismissed with younger children, and those students will be also staggered to, to meet their younger sibling, to be able to ensure that they are moving together with that. Also, lots of time has been spent in restricting common area use, so our students will not have access to common area uses outside of supervised monitored recess, which will also include bike recess. We'll have structured transitions and structured playground use. What I mean by structured transitions is they'll be monitored and supervised by staff, and also scheduled at specific times. So for example, our younger students in K through one will have an adaptive way of transitioning. So for example, we have already purchased and will be available at each school, a tethered line for our students to grab onto. It'll, it'll be marked with their name where they grab the line, and they will have a structured transition, because many of our kindergarten and first grade students won't know what is that distancing to do, so we'll get them used to doing that as well, and that'll be something in every K1 class throughout our district. throughout our district. In addition, with the structured transitions, our playgrounds will be supervised and monitored, but our students will also be assigned specific areas of playground. We've had lots of feedback that recess is important, fresh air is important, and we're going to be able to provide that as well at the in-class, in the in-person model. In-classroom celebrations, virtual and onsite field trips will take place, but those will happen in the classrooms, especially during the first quarter and closely monitoring if we move phases and loosen that. Large events such as meet the teacher night and our curriculum nights will either be virtual or placed over a longer period of time. We don't want to dismiss the fact that our connections with our parents are very important. So those may be staggered over extended period of time, especially if the calendar has changed. That allows us more time to be able to provide opportunity for our parents to come in, meet the teachers, see the classroom structures, and see how the classrooms are laid out. Desks in our classrooms or tables will face forward in one direction and will be systematically set up to allow the maximum social distancing required. The sharing of school supplies, that's been a concern that some of our parents have been addressing. We will ask our, our students to go back to how we brought supplies to school and we'll have those available for students in little pencil packets and things like that. We're going to do limited sharing, but whatever is shared, so for example, a computer keyboard where students may be in for computer instruction, will be disinfected and wiped down in between use. Before we go to school childcare, will be available. Our community department and Kids Express have done a wonderful job through the closures and into summer. We will still follow those same protocols and it'll be available. As parents have said, that is a, very much a concern for them is to have safe, quality childcare. Arrival and departure for our visitors. This may be the hardest piece for elementary schools. As we know, many of our parents want to be involved, they volunteer, they are a vital part of what makes Chandler Schools a success. But at this time, we are going to be asking for something totally different. And I know it may not meet everybody's need, but right now, we're meeting students' needs. Parents drop off and pickup areas will be clearly, will be had clear signage that asks drivers to stay in their cars at all times. We are asking our parents, we are, that appointments be made when you need to speak with individuals at school, especially for administration. That way, we can plan for those meetings and follow the guidelines that keep everyone safe. Non-essential visitors and volunteers will be restricted from campus and not assigned to classrooms at this time. And again, there'll be clear signage there. One of the big things that parents have asked is restroom use. And so we've read lots of emails about how we will do restroom uses. Students that need to use restrooms will be able to use restrooms as they need. We know that it doesn't always work to schedule those out, correct? So we are going to make sure that our students understand there's visible signage on the floor, as well as in the restrooms, that we will, as we do group restroom breaks, we will allow a number of students in where they can meet the facility. So how many facilities we have, how many toilets we have, we'll allow those students in and then students will social distance and go in as other students come out. So we will work with students and, and we do this every year where we bring students through the tour of the school and they will practice that. And then if students need to go during the school day, they will be signing out of classroom and then be able to use assigned restrooms, which we have for certain areas. Again, signings will be clear across campus of all of our schools. And that is being ordered and will be in tongue for our students and for our parents to see when they come to either virtually see our classroom spaces or not. The second option that we have for parents, and this is the one I want to spend a little more time on, is our online, our new Elementary Connect. It's important to note that this is not the same program as our Chandler Online program, if you've experienced that in the past, for seventh to 12th grade. We have different needs for elementary. It's also not the same program with the modifications that you're going to hear from Dr. Gilbert with the secondary program. It's designed for elementary students and it will support specialized instruction through a fully virtual environment. Also important to note, Dr. Castile said this at the beginning, it is not the same program that we had during the fourth quarter. So it is, it is a totally separate program and we're going to go into that in detail. Real quickly, I just want to cover some of the main aspects of the program. So a parent who chooses to enroll in Elementary Connect, which is our online learning model of instruction, they must register through Chandler Online Academy. There will be information coming out as how to do that. However, based on our feedback of our parents, as well as our discussions here at district, the students that sign up for online academy, because parents don't want them in the in-person model, will retain their seat at their boundary or open enrollment campus. Again, I'll say that again, the students will retain their open enrollment or bounded school seat when and if they feel it's appropriate for their student to go back into that setting. In addition, families may choose the transition back in person at the quarter for semester breaks to their enrolled site or their open enrollment site. We just ask plenty of advanced information so we can find the best transition. And families can work with our principals, as well as directly through our offices at Elementary Education, if there are special needs or circumstances that are required. There'll be a five-day instructional, a model per week for the Elementary Connect program. District technology devices will be available if needed, as well as connectivity. And there will be daily teacher-led instruction to whole and small groups with live lessons. That has been something that many of our parents have asked for and that we are building into the program. Course content will cover math, science, social studies, which is now called social sciences, English language arts, and elective areas. Our students will have elective areas to choose from as well, and there'll be individualized supports and accommodations provided. Our custom online learning environment, tracks will be in place in our, our Elementary Connect, and that will also be specially designed for English language learners, our students who receive special education services, our dual immersion Spanish and our dual immersion Mandarin students. And in addition, our traditional track where students are exposed to Spalding model. So those will all be built in. With Elementary Connect being new and our alternative to the in-person learning or the brick and mortar learning, I would like Dr. Jessica Edgar, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, to take us into a deeper dive into aspects of the virtual learning format online. Dr. Edgar?
Thank you, Mr. Narducci. Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Castile, members of the board. I'm going to share my screen in hopes that we are able to see my, do you see my screen, Madam President?
Um, no. I do not.
Try this one more time.
I think we had your screen, but we just didn't see the document.
Okay. Do you see my screen now?
We don't see a document yet.
Okay. Oh. Do you try this one more time? Saying that I'm sharing, here we go, share.
Um, there is something that says that your status is set to do not disturb. I don't know if that makes a difference.
I think you need to pick the correct screen. You probably have multiple screens going.
All right, does this work now?
Yes.
Fantastic. Third time's a charm. Thank you for hanging in there with me. So as Mr. Narducci stated, we do have Elementary Connect at Chandler Online Academy. So it is an extension to the current online academy for the elementary students. And being a former principal for many years, our goal was and our district's goal is to provide that brick and mortar experience in a virtual platform for elementary students because there, there is a developmental piece that is very important that we need to look at to make sure that we are meeting their needs in a virtual setting. So I'm going to reiterate some of the points that Mr. Narducci has already stated, but in the end, I really want to talk about the sample schedule and what's going to set us apart in Chandler Unified School District in our Elementary Connect. We chose the name Elementary Connect because we really want to connect with our students. It's imperative that we do that for our elementary students, like we said, for developmental pieces, that cognitive component, but also to feel connected for that social emotional piece where they're connected to a site, even though it's not necessarily a site, it's a virtual site. So we have on the left-hand side here, we have the general education, which is the general education track that we're going to discuss. We'll go through each of these pieces fairly quickly, but we'll be using a picture, we'll be having Google Classroom, using Google Beats often for live components, and then the Florida Virtual component will be using Buzz. The Florida Virtual piece is the, their course content, we have ELLA, math, science, social science, and special areas. And the special areas that we have are art, PE, Spanish, and technology. Those are all, the Florida Virtual components will be self-paced, which is also called asynchronous. And today, we're going to use self-paced as asynchronous, making sure that we understand that those students can do that at any time, although we are going to be providing each track a specific schedule. Also, in addition to the Florida Virtual course content, there'll be the opportunity for our teachers to use adopted resources to supplement what is already being presented in the self-paced piece. In addition, we'll have small skills-based groups to differentiate instruction and that will be live. That's a critical component, like when our other governing board members were speaking about phoneme segmentation, learning how to read, making sure that you see a teacher make those formations of their lips so that we can make sure that we have that component for our younger students, as well as our older students, the K6 model, making sure that we have that connection and we're able to provide that live instruction. And then also, we'll have instructional interventions. Those will also be the adopted resources that we currently have here in CUSD through self-paced and live experiences as needed and determined by the teachers. As Mr. Narducci mentioned, the CTA piece too, a customization piece will be that Spalding component. I do want to make sure that we address that piece because we do have a large number of our parents that choose the CTA model. Additionally, we have gifted education as we bring on Weinberg Gifted Academy. That takes us to two gifted academies and it is imperative that we have that connection, not only to the Elementary Connect, but also to that site as we open up Weinberg Gifted Academy and make sure that there's a connection to KGA and WGA, that's Knox Gifted Academy and Weinberg Gifted Academy. However, if you choose to go Elementary Connect, choose to enroll in Elementary Connect, it will be taught by gifted endorsed teacher from Weinberg Gifted Academy, Knox Gifted Academy, or any of our satellite schools where there is an endorsed teacher for gifted. We'll be using Google Classroom and also we'll have different pieces that will tap into what may look like in the brick and mortar setting at Weinberg Gifted Academy, Knox, or any of our satellite programs, using problem-based learning projects, shared inquiry discussion will be live. So there'll be connection to other children in the classroom, not just the teacher. So when we say live, that could be small group, that could be a group of five, that could be the whole class, or that could be one-to-one, depending on the instructional needs of the student. Also, we have dual language education, which Mr. Narducci discussed, is Spanish and we have Spanish at our CTA Liberty site, as well as our Mandarin at Tarwater. So we are going to have, use Google Classroom, Florida Virtual content, as far as the courses are concerned, as those are also up top in the general education. The language immersion instruction, because we have to have a specific minutes of conversation, we are looking at having some live pieces, maybe even outside of school during the school day for those individuals to have time, those students to have time with the Mandarin or Spanish-speaking teacher having conversations with those groups. So those will be scheduled and there'll be a direct connection back to the school site, whether it be Tarwater or CTA Liberty, making sure that we are still addressing the dual language component of this particular piece track in Elementary Connect. So we do have, had a minute on the bi-weekly immersion language conversation, conversations, which will be live, and as I said before, it'll be connected to that brick and mortar. We do realize that there will be plenty of students that will use Elementary Connect in the interim. It won't be a full year, it may be a semester quarter, as Mr. Narducci discussed. We want to make sure that we have that connection to the site, to the school site, as well as a connection in the Elementary Connect setting of the Chandler Online Academy. Also, just a few highlights as we go forward, I'm actually going to skip down to students with special needs. The resource teachers are going to engage in student, engage students in live instruction. And Dr. Marshall has been critical in training her teaching staff, as well as the rest of the Special Education Department. The live instruction is so important with those interventions and making certain that there's collaboration between the resource teacher and the online teacher to assist in the individualized specially-designed instruction. So those teachers that are online teachers are going to receive that input. And that also is something for English, English language learners. We will have collaboration with ELL specialist and the online teachers to assist as needed for those students, possibility of live instruction provided as needed, but they also will be following their individualized language learning plan. Some of the highlights is that we will be using CUSD benchmark assessments and state assessments. We will be using the adopted social emotional learning resources during our morning meetings, which we'll get to the sample piece in just a moment. Students will have access to a counselor and success coach through the Chandler Online Academy. Will we be providing ongoing training specific to issues related to online teaching and the online learner? We do recognize that this is something that is new to us, even though fourth quarter, as everybody has stated, it was a crisis. And so we look at really enhancing what we did fourth quarter because this is something completely different at this point in time. And we're very proud of what we looked to provide our elementary students. Three live interactions with the teacher daily, and I need to stress that, there will be three live interactions with the teacher daily. That could be whole group, that could be small group, that could be one-to-one, but there will be three live interactions with the teacher daily. And I want to draw your attention down to the sample schedule, and I hope it's not too small on your screen, but we do have a sample schedule and we're hoping that this is the sample schedule that we will use for general education and then do a few modifications as we get into the specialized areas of gifted and dual language, and then also with our students with special needs and English language learners, to make sure that we meet their needs. Because Elementary Connect in this situation that has presented itself, we need to be able to differentiate and provide access to all of our students on their, for their various needs. So 11:30 to 11:45, the morning meeting, as stated in the highlights, is going to be focused on social emotional learning. So making sure you have that first point of contact, we know as educators and human beings, having a face in front of you is quite a nice way to start the morning with a smile, make that connection, do a few of the lessons that are provided in our social emotional curriculum. And then we move into the social science piece, which is more self-paced, language arts, because it's a larger chunk of time and typically we're talking to the elementary students. The instructional models are small group differentiation based upon skills. So there'll be rotations with the teacher using Google Beats at this point in time to go ahead and have that instructional opportunity with those students in the small group. So we're talking 15 to 20 minutes as needed throughout that language arts because they will be responsible for the self-paced language arts lesson and then the live component. And that will be up to the online teacher to schedule those students and continue to monitor and adjust, looking at assessment data, that's what they need to make sure that we have addressed their instructional needs. 11:15 to 11:45, the sample schedule is a movement break. I am certain these elementary students will need more movement than just that. So hopefully throughout their having some movement breaks and we will call upon our parents to assist us and by training to our parents to make sure that they are aware of the movement that is needed and just how they can support their learner. Because if this is, in an elementary setting, it is an integral piece to have our parents involved in so many different aspects and have their support in the Elementary Connect to be successful. From 11:35 to 12:15, we have the rotating specials. As stated above, those specials may look different based upon, if you're in a language education, there might be a Mandarin component or a Spanish component with some of our adopted resources. So the rotating specials, although we do have the content for the virtual being the art, PE, Spanish, technology, those may be switched depending on which education track you are identified as being part of. Then we have lunch, favorite part of the day for every child, lunch. And then next, we have 1:00 to 2:30, we have math. So a lot like the language arts area, we will have math for a, for the 90 minutes, but there'll also be live rotations with our teachers. That could also, it doesn't necessarily need to be rotation skills group, it could be rotations one day or two days a week and then direct instruction. It could be that one-to-one piece, but there will be three live interactions a day with a teacher. And the last, we have science at the end of the day using the Florida Virtual Academy. And the last stop, we have science at the end of the day using the Florida Virtual Academy. I just want to stress again that this sample schedule is for one track of the many tracks that we are going to need to develop in Elementary Connect. And I think we have very committed individuals to making sure that this works. And I think that, like I said, the most important thing about Elementary Connect are those three live interactions with the teachers. They're critical, C B S D believes that making sure that there are touchpoints throughout the day, keeping connections in a virtual academy for elementary is a necessity as we look at replicating a brick and mortar experience in a virtual platform. Mr. Narducci, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Edgar. Madam President, members of the board, as you can see, a very robust plan has been created for the Elementary Connect online option for our families. I don't want to discount the work that not only our curriculum instruction team has done with our technology teams and our instructional technology and our Chandler Online Academy personnel for the last few months to enable this robust option. We feel with these two options at elementary, we can meet our families' needs based on what we've heard and what their choices may be. Much of this information will be online here shortly, and so that parents can preview that. In addition, as I said, there's a deeper steps to everything we just talked about. We will not get to everything today. That will also be published as well, and we are starting to meet with principals and discuss the elementary options. Again, critically, here will be both options have been designed with the input that we have received. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Gilbert to look at the secondary options, and then we'll be open for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Narducci, and Dr. Edgar, thank you so much for those presentations. Dr. Gilbert?
Madam President, members of the board, I have already shared a little bit in regards to the precautions that we have taken, not only at the elementary, but also at the secondary. We also have two options in the secondary for our students, one being the in-person and two being online. It is secondary as it relates to grades seven through twelve, but we do have three sites that have sixth grade on it. So I want to make sure that as I'm sharing this, that is taken into consideration as we address the needs of all of our students. Parents who choose to choose the in-person model of instruction will maintain their registration at their current enrolled site. We're looking at seventh and eighth grade students would be enrolled in the full schedule of courses. I reason I state full schedule of courses because it's depending on the school as to whether there are five classes they're enrolled in or six classes are enrolled in, enrolled in based on the schedule that the site has. Nine through twelfth grade students will be enrolled in six courses, and seniors would enroll in four courses if they're on track for graduation. This is consistent to what we currently have now in the sense of the courses that students are taking. Students will attend their core and elective courses. Some activities may be modified to address social distancing. I think this is important because there were some questions as related to electives. We have no intention to reduce our electives. We want to make sure that the courses that our students are used to taking, they can still take. We just may have to make some adjustments to spacing and social distancing, for example, in band or in choir. And at the same time, our goal is to reduce the number of students in classes where possible. We know that with the choices of whether online or in person, we're going to need to look at the schedules that we currently have on our sites and make adjustments to see where we can reduce class size, spread students out in regards to the teacher aspect, depending on the number of teachers that we have on-site, as well as once we know the number of students that would be selecting to be in the online model. We will also look at how are students transitioning through school, whether it be before school, after school, in between class periods. I will be working with our principals as a group to determine the best way for students to move throughout the school, to reduce the groupings of students, whether it be, as I shared before, at lunchtime, looking at having it open throughout the day so that you can stagger when students are going in to get lunch. You'll see that we will assemble and celebrate students in small groups, or it could be virtual. Again, we want to make sure that we still have that connectivity at the school for our students as we continue through the year for those that are selecting in-person. Field trips that are usually determined by the site will be approved on a case-by-case basis to ensure safety measures and expectations are in place at, and this is at the principal's discretion. With some of our field trips that we have at the secondary, it is not as clean as not allowing the field trips because some of the field trips, whether it be a closed field trip within Chandler or an extended field trip that I will share a little bit after being sixty miles or out of state, also is connected to, it may be a competition for particular classes, whether it's speech and debate, DECA, it could be a sporting competition. We will do, we will look at those as a case-by-case basis as it relates to field trips. Extended trips, field trips will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis as well, and that will be at the district level, as well as these are the trips that I normally bring to the board and share with you for your approval as it relates to out-of-state trips. That is just the beginning phase of allowing an extended trip. It takes your approval for any group to start fundraising in order to take that trip. Once the trip is approved by the board, they start fundraising. As the trip gets closer, there is an executive packet that has to be turned in to my office that is reviewed. When I'm reviewing it, I'm looking to see what is the structure of how they're determining students eating, their travel, where they'll stay, the location they're staying at. Whatever the event is, what are the precautions they are putting in place? So that prior to any approval going out, all those things are taken into account. Through these trips, must-have parents sign permission slips as well as waiver before a student can attend, and well as review to ensure safety measures and expectations are in place as they go to that location for the activity. When we look at athletics, which is a big piece as it relates to large groups of students in competition, some competitions, students would never come in contact, others, it may be a contact type of activity. Students will have access to all athletic and extricler campus activities as we have in the secondary. We've been very fortunate to have Mr. Williams, our district athletic director, who has worked with the A I A, has worked with our athletic directors throughout our district. And our athletics and activities will be in accordance with guidelines published by the White House and the CDC guidelines that are available, as well as in collaboration and looking at the guidelines from National Federation of State High School Association, as well as the Sports Medicine Advisory Committee and our trust that ensures our district and making sure that the things that we have in place are within the guidelines that we need to have. So as we look at in-person, again, the structure of what we will be doing in our in-person classes does not change in the sense of courses taken, what's available, the activities with some adjustments as we look at distancing, really taking into account how can we, at all where possible, reduce class sizes, sitting in desks that point forward if possible, because we know in science that is a little different. Again, how can we continue to work on our campuses to keep distancing where possible? The next option for our students is, oh, sorry about that, is our online model. In our online model, as in elementary, I think it's important as parents who choose to enroll in the online model of instruction, they'll be registering in the online Chandler Online Academy, and they will be able to retain their seat at their boundary or open enrolled site. As I know there was questions that if students chose to go to the online, they would not have an opportunity to go back to the site that they were either open enrolled to or their home site, and they will be able to do that. We will work with our families as we move forward in addressing where students will be going. Families may choose to transition back to in-person either at the quarter or at the semester. This becomes real important as we look at students returning to the brick and mortar at either the quarter or semester, and I'll talk a little bit more of what that looks like. The content that we are using in the Chandler Online Academy is our Florida Virtual curriculum. I think it's important to note that our online academy has been in place for just about ten years now in students being able to take courses and move at their own pace and work with our teachers, our highly-qualified teachers within our program. Our Chandler Online Academy is accredited by our North Central Accreditation, and it's also approved by the N C double A in regards to students being able to take the courses that we have available and to be accepted into the colleges that they plan to attend. The C O A has extensive course options for on-level honors and advanced placement. We are currently investigating adding additional A P courses because we do have A P courses on our campuses. And for some of the courses that we may not have available at this time, we are working to get them or to come up with another way to be able to address our advanced placement courses, as well as investigating how we can address I B. I've been working with the administration at Chandler High, as well as some of our staff at the Instruction Resource Center to look to see how we can address I B as we look at the courses available for our students. As well as when we look at junior high, I know that some of our gifted students, we also have honors and accelerated classes that we can offer our students at the junior high level when it comes to the, whether it's English and some of our core classes and honors in English, not a seven or eight, or if it's honors in social studies, things of that nature. Again, the goal is to continue to make sure, and our goal has always been with our online program, that a student can enroll in the online program, and we can meet all of their needs with the code, with the courses that we have so that they can attend if they wanted to for the entire, their entire career of education and be able to graduate. Because Chandler Online Academy does have their own diploma, but our students do have the opportunity in our normal basis to get diploma from the online or continue with their homeschool and walk and graduate there. I think it's also important when we look at courses and curriculum, we have been working and having discussions with Chandler Gilbert Community College because that is the main school that we work with for our dual-credit courses. And so we have been having, we've been in discussions as to what dual-credit would look like as it relates to our online courses. A big portion of being able to offer online dual-enrollment courses, I should say, has to do with credentials of the teacher to be able to teach those classes, as well as making sure that we're meeting the guidelines for dual enrollment courses at the college. One thing I think is really important to understand that it's not necessarily a two-way street when we look at the courses that we offer for dual enrollment. We have the expectations that we have established with the standards in our courses, let's just say, English, for example, that we've established for our students. And then we look at the requirements that dual-credit the college wants within the class. And that comes together where a student is able to get the high school credit as well as a college credit. There is a difference, though, in the sense of what is expected for the criteria in the course for the dual-credit to what we expect in the high school class. So if they just took the college class, there would be some things that we have expectations of content and standards that is not covered if they just took the class at this level. I think it's real important to note. As we look at the online, as was shared, I think it's important to note that what we did in the fourth quarter as it relates to secondary wasn't with the Chandler Online Academy. It was the structure of working with the site and their homeschool. And I think that although it was a tough time in transitioning, I really was impressed with the hard work that all of our teachers and our staff were doing trying to make sure that we can make the best of the situation that we had and work with our students, especially at the high school because of the issues that we have to look at from the high school perspective of courses going on transcripts, transcripts going to college, and what that could mean for a student if we are not careful in putting our best foot forward to make sure that what is going on their transcript and what they're putting out to the colleges that they're looking to go to becomes very important. A piece that is an addition to this next year as we work with the online because our goal is really to make sure that we are making connections with our families, connections with students, whether it's with teachers and the administration on the online, but also the addition of success coaches who will work with teachers to implement a relationship-building component with students so that it's not just I'm online and I'm working independently and I'm moving forward with no adult contact in the sense of what's your needs, what are the supports that you have? So within our success coaches, they'll be focused on relationship building with students. They'll assist online instructors in how to connect and engage students so that we can increase the engagement for our students. They'll work with the counselors and the social workers to connect social emotional resources to our students and families. Again, they will build connections with the students. They'll maintain communication with parents and the counselors that they are working with because we do have counselors at the online that will also be working directly with the students. They will establish contact and maintain regular communication, establish rapport with students, and encourage them to succeed academically. Again, the success coach is really coming beside the counselor to see how can they support the student? What are their needs? What resources can they connect students with? They'll assist with the developing of an individualized work schedule for students in order to help them pace themselves, establish what courses they're taking, what do they need to do? How can they set a schedule up for themselves so that they are utilizing their time widely, wisely? And then also, we want to have a person that the student can connect with that they feel that they're provided a trusting environment as they are working with these students. Families who choose the online instruction, again, they must commit and complete either by the quarter or the semester. This becomes very important as we look at the quarter or the semester because you will have students that are going full-time and choosing the online, if they are. If they choose that they're going to be there for a quarter, they would be in six courses in the first quarter to be able to transition back to the, at the beginning of the second quarter. This becomes important because if we don't make sure that we have students in six classes that they will complete in the first quarter, then when it's time to transition back to the home site, it wouldn't, it won't be smooth because we want to be able to have a grade in the first quarter that can be combined with a grade in the second quarter once they go back to the building. That also allows them to have a smooth transition from what they're going to learn in the standards at the online in the first quarter and then move to the second quarter with little gap in what it is that they were learning. If they choose to be at the online for a semester, then students would be still taking six courses, but they would take three in the first quarter, and they would complete that. It would be a semester's worth of three quarters each in the first quarter. And then in the second quarter, they would take another three courses, which then by the end of the semester, they will have the whole semester, they will have the whole first semester of six quarters completed. Then you would have a smooth transition to go into the second semester. As our students are moving, they would have a transcripted grade to be able to then move back to their home site. This is why it is so important that we have a commitment from our students and our families that they're either going to be there for a quarter or a semester. When we look at part-time and I I'm gonna jump down to concurrent enrollment because I really want to put these together and explain it. If we have students that are part-time, these are students that will be taking some classes in the brick and mortar and they will be taking some classes in the online. And that is the current practice we have now. So you can have a student that may take anywhere from one to five courses in the online and the other courses at the home site or the brick and mortar. This is important to note because these students are committing to being at that at the online course in the online courses for a semester because these courses would be taken over the semester. They would be working at their own pace. It's it's quite possible that in the first semester of the 18 or 17 weeks, they could finish one of those courses in 16 weeks and then they're focusing on the other courses. But I think it's important to note that this would be considered a part-time student that would be selecting to be at the brick and mortar course at the brick and mortar as well as in the online school at the same time. So course requirements are equivalent to the in-person instruction model so that grades, credits can be transferred at the end of each quarter or semester. Really important because it in the high school especially, the transcribing of courses becomes so important of what the colleges are looking at or trade schools of what students or where students are going. When we look at COA grading practices will continue to be followed as well as we give final exams are proctored at the online. This is a big portion of accountability within our online program. There are many locations that tried to do this and struggle, but we've been successful in having exams. And this could be in-person or virtual. We are working on a virtual tool to be able to do this for our our students. I think accountability and teacher engagement is real important as we look at our students and their needs on campus. You know, our district tech, we know that they'll have some students that will need devices. So our district technology devices are going to be available for those those students that are in need as well as if at all possible, finding the connectivity, whether it be hotspots and things of that nature. We are still investigating the ability as we did in the fourth quarter to be able to engage our students. Students will be engaged in virtual activities throughout the throughout the year. I know that Mr. Pack, who is the lead administrator at our Chandler Online Academy, is working to do more things of virtual and has been in-person, but right now more virtual in order to engage our students. Our accountability for our teachers as we look at connectivity is really important. Our staff will hold office hours to assist students two two times per week. This could be in-person, email, or by phone. We also are including and beefing up, again, as we talked about, really making those connections with our students and having virtual meetings. And that will be added this year. Again, how do we connect with our students? Making sure we can not only connect with just the teacher, but also bringing groups of students together using Google Meets so they can have a live connection with the teacher in a specific subject area. This is also outside of the office hours, another piece that we have added as a connection for our students. So this would be an in-person live connection with with the teacher in Google Meets and could be a group of students. What you may find, this will be two two times per week or an hour and a half at each meeting time. And during the schedule, students will know here is the scheduled time where it could be English teacher, it could be math teacher that students will have access to, whether it's to get supports, to have mini lessons. So for example, it might be in a math lesson and they're in Algebra I and we know that students struggle in certain areas in Algebra I. It could be a mini lesson by the teacher letting everybody know that during this time, there's going to be a mini lesson on addressing some of the issues that they're seeing as teachers that will help students and at the same time be able to ask questions at that time or on their specific course of things that that are there. Students will may participate in athletics, extracurricular activities. As they get ready for graduation, they will be able to still participate at their home site. I know there have been questions of how will students, if they are in different programs, can they still participate? Yes, they will be able to. So if we have students that are within different programs, they can be in the online environment for their learning model and then still be able to participate in the activities that they have been in the past. So when we look at our students and participation, what are we doing with our online to be able to offer? We we do believe in this model, really making sure that we are connecting not only with the success coaches, our counselors, our social workers, the different resources that we have to be able to give wraparound service for our students that are in the online. We believe we can still move in that direction. With that being said, that is the last part of my presentation and I will, as well as Mr. Narducci and our team that, again, it wasn't just us, there's a large team that really worked on all this, but together we'll be able to answer questions. And I know this information that I shared right now is short from the perspective of we did have quite a bit of information that we shared with you at the last.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. I really appreciate the the very thorough presentation from both you and Mr. Narducci. So we have a little bit of time for some questions. I think I may start. I'm gonna start with a questioner, too. I'm gonna start with Mr. Narducci. We have had some concerns with some parents about, you know, kindergarten kindergartners and having a full day. We still do have half-day programs available, don't we, for kindergartners?
Correct. We have the opportunity for parents to choose an AM or PM section of kindergarten. And where we have enough parents, we would provide that opportunity. Usually it's a parent or two at a school or and we provide that AM or PM possibility. Now, here's the thing, though. They have to pick the AM or PM that they feel best meets their students' need. Not all is instructed during that time as it is a half-day program, but we try to get the bulk of it in at that time of the conference.
Thank you. And then I do have a couple of questions about the elementary connect. So is the basic curriculum in such areas such as math and science, are is that content area actually coming from Florida Virtual or is that something that we have developed in-house?
Jessica, I'll I'll take this, Dr. Edgar, and then you can add to it. It's it's a mixture. The Florida Virtual will be the generalized program for a lot of the asynchronous as well, which would be what we don't call the live pieces. But to connect to our specialized groups, there's going to be a combination. And also to be able to make sure that our students arrive back at the brick and mortar ready to go, there'll be a combination of meeting that need and making sure the district curriculum is is closely matched with the Florida Virtual piece. Florida Virtual doesn't meet all of the Arizona State standards, so we will backfill where that doesn't. And that will be done through the online options. Dr. Edgar, do you have anything to add to that?
I think you did a very good job, Mr. Narducci. I do want to just share with the governing board that we have created modules already specifically in social science and science. So we have Chandlerized them and added them into the Florida Virtual piece. So that's all housed in Buzz because we did want to make sure that it aligned with those Arizona State standards. And we will use adopted resources to backfill for anything that we feel is necessary that we have missed. But we did run correlation reports based upon the Common Core, the National Common Core standards and the Arizona State standards to identify which areas we will need to backfill. And our online teachers will be provided training to let them know exactly what those are so they can plan ahead with our adopted resources.
And then just to verify, if a parent decides to go into the online program in the elementary school, they will have the same rules as the junior highs and high schools in that they have they will be able to move at the quarter so that they don't miss materials. Is that correct?
Correct. As in in our documentation, we will move students quarter or semester or at end of year. They will maintain their seat at their open enrolled or boundary school that was of their choice before we 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 went into this year. And those that want to open enroll into the Chandler Online Elementary Connect Program would do that through an open enrollment as well. So yes, there is the ability to do that. And then we will view any circumstances that a parent may bring to a principal or our offices individually.
Thank you. Looks like Mr. Evans has some questions. Mr. Evans?
Thanks, President. The first thing I wanted to say was it was a little bit hard to hear Dr. Edgar and Mr. Narducci because I think you two got really excited about this stuff. And I think you're you're ready to go. So that's exciting to me, which I can go back to school. Two quick questions. The first one is I taught and I had some students who were online on a computer, but physically they were in my classroom with me. I found it really tough to measure their their comprehension and figure out where they were so that I could assign more, you know, supplemental information, supplemental help for them. How does that work now? This was 20 years ago, 25 years ago.
Are you talking about in the online version?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. Because, you know, obviously they're not physically together. They're not looking, a teacher's not an educator's not looking over a student's shoulder.
Sure. So let me let me go at it about the elementary because it is going to be a different component. And that's where our live instruction comes in. And that's where our connectivity to teachers come in outside in the asynchronous, or we call that self-paced environment as well. So the teachers will be assigned to those students specifically and won't have to manage in-person and online environment. So the techs will pose individuals in the program that we're we've created and will allow that teacher to make sure assessments are not only benchmark, but formative assessments are discussed with students and then also to do correctives in that environment for individual students and bring them back into intervention pieces so that we don't create gaps. We'll also have and Ms. Howard has worked with assessments that we will pre-assess our students in both environments to see what gaps are missing. That way, we work with students that are in those environments, in those classrooms. You know, and I'm going to call it a classroom in an online environment because that's what it is. And that's what it'll feel like. And those students that are in the online environment will also get the opportunity to be able to experience regular things that are happening, field trips, virtual field trips, celebrations with the class and small group and whole group. So I don't want us to look at it as teachers trying to do things. We need to give them the professional courtesy to do something very well and to make sure our outcomes are student learning, student achievement, and our students connecting with the environment that parents choose for them.
Okay, thank you. And then, I'm sorry, Dr. Edgar, were you gonna add to that?
I think Frank covered it, but I do want to note, yes, we are excited.
Yeah, you're definitely excited about it. The second question goes into something Mr. Narducci just talked about, and that's the the team's concept of it. So I know Dr. Edgar talked a lot about about the social emotional piece of it. And we know that our kids struggle more, I think, than we did to actually interact with one another and do work together. So how do we how does that work? And with that, there are kids who are going to advance really quickly. How do we keep them engaged, sure, we're not holding them back? And and/or can they then mentor other students and help bring other students up by working together and collaborating?
Sure. I'll take a stab at it. And Dr. Edgar, you can fill in there. It's really important for our kids in the synchronous or the online learning environment to actually do that, to be engaged with other students, to be able to have those conversations. And those will be allowable in the elementary connect program, much more than you would see with independent learners that are much older. And also in the small group aspects, but they those conversations need to be monitored and supervised. And so our staff will, the teachers that are working with them, will make sure that those are available to them. Because you're right, our parents have asked, our kids need connectivity. And many times our parents have said they need physical touch even. So those, that's why the in in a school model may work better for those students who need that contact. However, it doesn't mean it will be void in the the elementary connect program of Chandler Online Academy. We will do everything we can. For example, I'll give you one example. We require classroom meetings to be done where our social emotional aspects and our student voice can be heard. We will expect the same to be done by our our teachers that are doing the online teaching as well, which will allow kids to be able to hear other students' voice as well as to be learned from others. That's how we best get new learning. So yes, those will be available and those are very important, Mr. Evans.
Thank you.
I think we'll we'll continue with the elementary questions. Mrs. Brunner, would you like to ask a question? And then Dr. Gilbert will get to the secondary after after we get all the elementary stuff done. So everybody save some time so that we can ask Dr. Gilbert lots of questions, too.
Thank you for all the work, Dr. Edgar and Mr. Narducci, on the online Chandler Connect program. That is, if there was one thing that was in the hundreds and hundreds of emails that I got from people, was their concern about what that would look like. And I hope they have a better idea today what their options are. I did want to ask if we could possibly set up a feedback survey of the parents who their children are in the online version so that, I don't know, three or four weeks in, they can get feedback about what's working and what's not, since this is kind of a new ground for the district. Do we have any plans to set something up like that?
We can definitely do that as well as the feedback from our teachers as well, what additional supports they may need. So that will be something built in, but also for the brick and mortar. We want to hear how it's going for our families as well, especially as Dr. Castillo said, as we move from phase to phase based on what our community spread is of COVID and where we are at that specific time. It's going to be really important that we get that feedback. Parents have to understand, though, that we're going to get different feedback from everybody. So we will do, as always, what's best for kids and accept that feedback and modify programs as best we can.
Of course. And I know we, I mean, I feel that we do a pretty good job of, you know, having communication with our staff sometimes, especially if it's in the online environment. There's not as much interaction between the parent and the teacher. And so I was just hoping there'd be some kind of formal way to connect with them as well. And then this also feeds into the two-week issue that we've already discussed. I think once you've explained what the online will look like, it helps people understand why we might need a couple extra weeks to get that rolling because it is a whole new beast of a delivery model with elements and moving parts. Do we know how many families will need devices that did not need devices in quarter four because of all the synchronous learning? Maybe they only have one computer, but they have three children. Have we have we gotten any information on that? And do we have the resources to provide more devices for folks?
I'll try to take a shot at this one. Mrs. Brunner, the following the governing board's decision, Mr. Rother is preparing information to go out describing much of what we talked about or talking about tonight. Then the families will receive a letter with asking them to select the option or their choice. And they'll be also asked, do you need or does your child need some technology support and a computer? At that point, I believe At that point, I believe we're going to ask for the information back no later than July 10th, and as they come in, we'll be able to determine what our needs are. We believe we have enough at this point, but we'll know more in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. And then, I guess my last question, and honestly, it's the one I think that is most important. My concern still is about class size in the in-person model. We have no idea, really, how many families are going to pick this model. They didn't know what this model looked like until today. Those previous surveys we've had, they may have been using what they experienced in quarter four to make that judgment. And I guess, my question is, do we have a hard line that we will not cross for class size in the in-person model? And, well, that's the most important question. My other question is, if we're going to move kids into specials rooms, and rotate class after class in that space, what are the cleaning procedures in the specials rooms, where we have 10 different classes going in there in one day?
Right. So let me address the special issues first, for the elementary. So for the elementary classrooms, we will provide time, we'll ask principals to schedule. As a matter of fact, we're starting our meetings with leads tomorrow, to schedule that, where if there's anything that's used, that will be disinfected. We are going to also alter some of the instructional modes in those classrooms, where we're teaching units that may not require as much hands-on and disinfecting, at least while we go back in transition. The other part, the other question, was in regard to the social distancing. We are going to maximize social distancing to try to meet the six-foot. With that, as I said in the presentation, that we know that we probably can get that by maximizing classroom space. We may need to pull things out of the classroom to try to create that six-foot distancing. Mr. Fletcher has worked with us with models on what those classrooms can look out in classroom layouts. We've also reserved desks, and have desks on hold to distribute to classrooms. But the biggest part is, we want our parents to be excited about the online model. If they have any, they have any hesitation of going to brick and mortar right now, it's going to be a great viable choice to get what they need, and make that decision when they want. I'll tell you, that will help us immensely to meet that, that, that goal of the 15 to 21 in a classroom, based on what that classroom size is. We will be working with our teachers to remove things like reading desks and extra furnishings that may not be required in a classroom, to get that social distancing model. Again, even though it's only a requirement, we're going to try to really work with that at elementary, based on students being a little bit more sedentary in a classroom, meaning they are in a classroom for a longer period of time than, say, our secondary students are. So where we can, we are going to do that.
And just my last question, before someone else might have an elementary question. In a 30 by 30 classroom with 21 kids, there, there is no way to make that six feet. There's no way, logistically, to do that. So I still haven't heard an answer about, are we going to have a square foot limit? And if so, then how are we going to logistically balance the numbers for teachers? So for example, let's say we have 30 kids go on the online class. Is that online class going to be bigger to help minimize the size of the in-person class? Or are we going to hire more teachers? And, and the budget impact on that?
I, I would say, yes, we will maximize the online to what it's needed, but we have some models also, that if we line up desks right against the wall, against the wall, we also have principals go out and measure, we are able to get closer to the 21. Again, is that ideal? Not sure yet. Is it what parents prefer yet? They'll see that once we allow them to sign up for one or the other. But we'll have models in place before, before students return, so they can see what that would be. But again, it's all where we line up a lot of classrooms. So, but yes, we would have to restructure classrooms, a little bit of what's in there, to meet that guideline. But we're comfortable with saying between 15 and 21 will fit in an average 30 by 30, if we use wall space, where our, where we line up against that wall, and we end up against that wall, to be able to distance. And again, we can move students around based on the number of teachers we do have, doing the in-person model, to see where a classroom might have less. We may also have a multi-graded classroom, where more of our parents decided to go online. So again, we're going to work with those models. As far as a capacity, it's all, it's all recommendations at this time. There's no mandate to have a capacity. So wherever we can make that social distancing happen, we will. We'll start with the six feet. If we can manage the four feet, then we'll do that, but we'll try to keep that social distancing, so that masks or face coverings can be utilized in where social distancing of six feet is maximized.
And then, the parents who come in and see it doesn't work for them, can they switch back to online?
Yeah, they'll work with our, with our principals, as well as, as well as our office, to make any specialized aspects. We are asking that they stay with one of the models, because we are looking at curriculum units being taught, and then for some that want to make that transition, we may be able to work with them in other virtual environments. So we'll definitely work with parents who feel it isn't the best piece of their, their trial, but we are recommending the quarter and the semester rotations in and out of those environments.
Thank you, Dr., thank you, Mr. Narducci. Dr. Gilbert, I'm going to like, let you off the hook until the actual board meeting, because we are going to have to take a little bit of a break here, but I would like to have Ms. Love ask a question or two before we, we take our break, just to give her an opportunity. Ms. Love, do you have a question or two?
Yes, I do. You guys asked most of my elementary questions, so thanks for that.
Well, this should be elementary question.
However, you know, I do, and it, I'm, this is not, you know, you guys, because I think that you guys are doing a wonderful job in terms of working around this really intense, crazy situation. You know, I just have to kind of state my discomfort with the in-person model, the way that it is, and in terms of the space, as Ms. Brunner was talking about. And Mr. Narducci, I hope that you are sharing that model that you held up, because I couldn't quite see it clearly. I'm a very visual person, so I would like to see that, and how those logistics are going to work. But I think I've been in a lot of meetings where the conversation isn't, if teachers and students contract COVID, it's more moving along the lines of when. And that's a really challenging conversation to have, especially as we are considering these in-person models. And I know a few teachers who are sick right now, and have tested positive for COVID, and their family members have. So, you know, my concern is with our teachers as well, because they're going to have, you know, mass amounts of exposures, no matter, you know, what we do, if we do an in-person or an in-person hybrid. You know, their safety is, you know, compromised during this whole thing. But I think that this whole model kind of falls apart when we do have teachers who contract COVID and are out sick. And I just kind of wonder what the sub-model looks like for that, and if we can't get subs, what does that do in terms of our spacing? Like, does that whole class kind of get shut down, or a whole hallway? You know, I just, I think I need to understand what that looks like, and ask these scary questions, because it's going to happen, and we need to know what the plan is, if we're being forced to go this way.
Sure. So let me take a, just at the elementary level, and thank you for the input there. You know, we are taking that very serious on the social distancing pieces. So I will definitely ensure that, that one of our contractors provided for us with the square footage of a typical classroom. But for substitute coverage, we're not going to be able to, nor is it in any of our plans for elementary, to double up class sizes, or anything of that nature, when a sub is short. We will utilize existing staff at the elementary schools to be able to cover those classrooms, and substitutes, as well as teachers, who may not be assigned, based on the online taking care of quite a bit of need, will be assigned to be able to, you know, create that substitute pool. We also know that many of our substitutes are really depending on coming back to work and being able to work with students, and so we will still have our, our, our pool of subs. But when we do have a teacher that needs to be home, or needs to be quarantined, or is, we will take care of that by having a highly qualified person in that room. Dr. Gilbert, did you want to, or secondary later? I'm sorry.
No, I think, I think it's important to...
Go ahead.
I was going to say, I think it's important that we're not looking to double up any classrooms either. We're working with HR, as they are developing their plan, to make sure that, as, as much as possible, we have a, a deep number of subs that we can utilize, as well as having some permanent-type subs in some locations, that we would be working with. Again, as Mr. Narducci said, having some staff that may not be assigned from that perspective, that we could move into the role to work with students.
Dr. Nance, did you want to add to that?
I'm not. Is Dr. Nance on?
No, she's not.
I'm sorry.
She had to leave for a few minutes.
Mrs. Cooper?
I'm muted. Sorry.
Thank you, yes. This is Andy Cooper, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, and we are working with, to increase our subpool in general, but also, just logistically, how we can prepare for maybe higher absences at particular schools, because there might be an outbreak there, there may be people that need to quarantine. So we're working on how we can maybe target a group of subs. The other thing that we're working a little bit is training our subs, so that if they do come in, that they'll be more familiar with, they get, get some training as well, they'll be more familiar with our model of instruction, so they can be more effective when they do come in and fill in for it.
Thank you, Mrs. Cooper. Ms. Love, I will, I'm sure that you have some additional questions, but I think we will take a short break now, and we will address any, please write them down, and we will address the additional questions during the action item during the meeting. We will have plenty of time to do that, and so at this point in time, we will take a short break until our, our meeting begins at 7:00 PM.